Hey, thank you, Jim. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us. I'd like to call the Monday, September 20th, 2021, meeting of the Town of Ryanbeck Planning Board to Order. Thank you all for being here. I see we have a full, full house tonight, and we'd like to welcome back Edna, who's been absent for a few meetings. You have before you the posted meeting agenda, and I don't believe there are any changes to that. Does anyone else know of any changes? So we'll just confirm the meeting agenda as you've received it. You have Jim's meeting notes. Any questions about those? Could I have a motion to accept the meeting notes as submitted?
I saw a move, Edna.
Moved by Edna. Second one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you. You've received the draft minutes of the September 7th meeting. Are there any changes or corrections anyone would like to make? During none, could I have a motion to accept the minutes as submitted?
So move.
So move Sean second.
Kathy.
Kathy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Extensions?
Abstain, Edna.
Thank you, Edna. One abstention for the record, the motion carries. Any correspondence and announcements? Okay, I think that takes us to the first, the last order of business under the business session. And that is a presentation by Mark Dixon of the C A B was going to talk to us about the N R I project.
Hi, everybody.
I for one know nothing about it, so I'm looking forward to hearing from you, Mark.
Right, and that's why, that's why I'm here tonight, to help share with you what we're doing. I'm going to try to share my screen. Hopefully that works. Okay.
Mark, Mark, this is, Mark, this is Jim Levy. I'm going to run the slides for you. We run everything through us. Just let me know when you want to go to the next one.
All right, so we're currently, the Town of Ryanbeck is currently involved in a technical assistance partnership with D E C's Hudson River Estuary Program and Cornell Cooperative Extension of Duchess County. You can go next. I'm going to move this along because I know you guys have a lot on your agenda. Our project team is the Town of Ryanbeck, and Conservation Advisory Board is taking the lead on that for the town. And we're also involved with the Village of Ryanbeck and the Town of Hyde Park, then the Hudson River Estuary Program and Cornell Cooperative Extension of Duchess County. Can move on. And what we're going to talk about, this presentation was put together by Nate Nardi Cyrus. He's a conservation and land use specialist for the D E C. He gave this presentation a week ago to the town board. If you want to see his version, it's going to be better than mine. It's, it's on the recorded minutes for last town board, last week's town board meeting. But what we're going to talk about quickly would be what a natural resource inventory is, what our project goals are, the timeline of the project, maps and the mapping that we can expect from this project, and the uses for the N R I. Okay, next. Go ahead. So the process that's put together by the D E C is, the first step is the natural resource inventory. And then, once we have all the resources inventoried and mapped, then that gives the planners, you, the town, the tools to help prioritize which resources need more, more or less protection. And then, the next step would be to take plans that can protect and manage the resources, which would be updates to the comprehensive plan or zoning changes that might, might encompass some of these priorities. Okay, next. The natural, what our natural resource inventory is, it's a compilation of all the data that we have existing for the town that shows the resources that we, that we are able right now to inventory. And that will include geological and soils, bedrock and soils, water resources, wetlands, floodplains, streams, habitats and wildlife, which we're actually in a very good position for because not too long ago, Hudsonian did a study for the Town of Ryanbeck, and they actually mapped out a lot of the habitats and wildlife in the Town of Rydebeck. So we'll be incorporating that data, which is very Rydebeck specific into this. Land use such as agricultural, climate conditions, and cultural resources, which could also be historical scenic resources. And actually, the villages, including their water mains and sewer infrastructure into their version as part of their resources to manage. Okay? Go ahead. The N R I maps are kind of like the heart of what we're going to expect from this. And it's really the big give that we're getting from this partnership. Cornell Cooperative Extension is providing their G S lab and their expertise in mapping. And the D E C is providing their expertise in facilitating how to properly prepare the N R I. But what we're going to get is about 25 maps. And they will be both with and without parcels. And then alongside each map will be a written description to explain what the resource is and what the maps mean. This right now, what's shown here is just the base map. Okay, next. We're also, it's what we're getting pretty much is, is, it's all, it's all paper. We're getting the mapping done in G I S format. But the plan that we're going to receive from this project is just going to be a paper version of it. But we'll still have all that G I S data that we can use in the future. And some towns are taking the extra step of taking that mapping and create web mappers that they can actually put online. And that gives the whole town access. Our goals are to cultivate stewardship of our resources. And that's something I try to facilitate in my, my reports that I give. Well, a lot of my reporting that I get to the Conservation Advisory Board is pretty much taking the G S, G I S data that I can have found available and try to present it to the board so that you know what's there, so that you're informed. Providing form, planning, design, review, and foundation for plans and policies to protect critical resources. Okay, next. This is our project timeline. We started in March. That's when the town board signed a resolution, then we began the mapping process this summer. Right now, we're in the fall and winter stage, which is pretty much the public, town and public outreach. And we're going to be looking for public participation and also, you know, board, other board participation to help review and comment on these maps as we're drafting them. And then hopefully we'll have the, the N R I done by the spring or summer of next year. Okay? The maps that we can expect will include climate, climate mapping, physical settings, water resources, habitats and wildlife, and land use. And then he's just given an example of some of the mapping they've already put together. And I think there's some more details on the following slides. Okay? In far as climate, we expect climate resilience. This map that they're showing right here is data that the D E C has created. And this is called a climate resilience. They have a climate resilience score. It's a climate resilience map. And what it's telling us is the dark green is telling us that those areas are expected to be more resilient in a changing climate in the future. So as temperatures rise, whatever, those areas will be more resilient to habitat, wildlife, and, and deserve maybe more consideration for preservation. Other things we might expect is solar feasibility and sea level rise mapping. Okay? Physical settings that we're going to expect in mapping, we'll get topography and elevation, steep slopes. Is this, the map is shown right here is a steep slopes mapping that they have. And bedrock geology and surface, superficial geology. Most of the data that we have, we're at, this project is in terms of actually be bringing in new data. We're just taking existing data. Most of it's already there between the state and Cornell. So it's, and the Hudson, Hudsonian project that we had. So we're going to be taking that existing information and putting it all into one resource map, our natural resource inventory. Okay? And water resources, drinking water, resources, stream and watersheds, D E C classifications, floodplains, stream habitats and wetlands. And this is, I don't, they have, wow, this is, this map shows aquifers and where the permeability is highest over the aquifer. So they would deserve more protection. So those green areas are areas of high permeability over an aquifer. And you might think that they would need more high protection, higher degree of protection because any development could go down in through the ground and affect the aquifers. Okay, next. And I hope I'm not going too fast. Again, I know you have a lot on your table. Habitats and wildlife, again, Hudsonian provided us a lot of mapping. I, I got my hands on all that G I S data recently, just as a part of this project. We were able to get it from Hudsonian because the only thing that's available of all that, that report is we have is just physical hard paper or PDFs. And that's not really that, that's not useful to me. But once I can overlay that onto the tax map, and I can overlay that under ortho imagery, then I can see, and I've given you, you guys have seen examples of some of the mapping I've been able to produce from this. A lot of the mapping is already available now through the D E C has their Hudson, Hudson River, Hudson Valley Natural Resource Mapper. And a lot of this, a lot of information is already available there. But what's available there will be now kind of sized down to the Town of Rydebeck scale. And, and then we'll add all of our habitat and wildlife information from the Hudsonian. And this because landscape context, habitat map, important to biodiversity, biodiversity areas, large forests, coastal habitats, Hudson River shoreline. Okay? Okay, land use, agricultural resources, conservation, recreation, and scenic resources, and areas of municipal protection. So these are all things that we can expect through this project. Okay? What they want us, well, again, this was put together by the D E C. And they're encouraging towns to develop a natural resource inventory and to be aware of what's in our environment and to take those steps. So they're, so they want us to take the next step. I think our town is probably is ready. I think we are all aware that our comprehensive plan is fairly old now. It's going on over 10, maybe 15 years now for the comprehensive plan. And updates might be forthcoming. And, and those update, updates hopefully will incorporate this information that we get through the natural resource inventories. Okay? This is just showing maps, more maps, and the examples of more protection and planning, open space plan, open space inventory, community preservation plans. All these maps can be overlaid in G I S. You won't get that on the paper version, and hopefully the paper version just doesn't sit on a shelf. Hopefully, we can take these G I S. I have, I have access to a G I S platform. So I can incorporate that all on my computer, and I can just overlay all the maps. And you can see a lot of good information that way. Okay? And this is what the city of Kingston did with their maps. They took the natural resource inventory mapping, and then they were able to use that and facilitate their open space vision maps. So this mapping worth that we're getting for the natural resource inventory is going to have a lot of other uses down the road. Okay, this is an interesting one. You know, I had, it talks about developing checklists. I set this checklist to Michael, and he didn't seem familiar with it. This is, this is actually, this checklist is, is, is shown on the D E C's N R I guidebook. And uses Rydebeck as an example, a good example that we use this checklist. And Michael wasn't familiar with it. Hopefully, we are using it. It's actually in chapter 101 of the subdivision of land code. And under 101, 4.3 sketch plan review and classifications, section A1. It refers to this checklist. And so we should be using, this is a planning board checklist. It's in the appendix A. And hopefully, the planning board is using that. This checklist is also would serve the Conservation Advisory Board well as, as well. And, and I would, I would think that the checklist could be expanded to just broaden more general projects, not specific to, to subdivisions, but that's obviously your call. But hopefully, you guys will wear this checklist. It's part of the town code and should be used during the sketch plan review and classification process. Okay? And the other thing was stewardship. Yeah, during the slide presentation that Nate gave, he, he focused more on municipal stewardship. And he gave a, an example of Timor Park and Beekman, which they take pride in. And they use this mapping to help them to further develop stewardship of their own municipal assets. But I am a big, strong advocate for the private property owners being aware. And I try to make my reports geared that way, that it's not just for the planning board. It's for these private property owners. They come to Rydebeck, they, they buy a parcel of land, and they know, they don't always know what's there. And for them to become good stewards, it helps for them to know what's there. So hopefully, having these mapping and resource maps available. And I try to again, include them in my reports, Conservation Advisory Board reports, to help both the planning board know what's there, but also in the future, because not everything has to be regulated. But hopefully, property owners take good steps toward being good stewards of their property. Okay? And this is just more of the park, the Timor Park that felt deserving. We now have a website, but you can reach it off of the Conservation Advisory Board, a link on the town website. And where we're putting up the draft maps and minutes of our, of our meetings. Right now, I think we only have the base map up, but within the next meet, next week, we should have a lot of, the resource maps have been done. So we're going to try to get them up so that everybody can look at them. And, and if you have comments, please let us know. And you can reach me through the Conservation Advisory Board. And if anybody else is interested and has more questions, please feel free to contact me. And thank you very much for your time. And that's all. I know I've been a ghost. You know, I'm a member of the Conservation Advisory Board. We, we're kind of hit and miss. Sometimes we hit it, sometimes we miss it. You know, it's, we, we bought, just lost three members. And so I, I, I'm proud of the hits, and I'm sorry of some of the misses. But we're just going to keep trying to plug along and kind of serve the planning board as best as we can in the future. And this is one way, I think, that will help the planning board. I'm.
Mark, can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Very quick.
I have some comments.
I just, you mentioned that these are going to be available printed.
Yes.
In 2021, why aren't we doing these digital?
Well, because we were pretty fortunate that we got this partnership. Generally, the way this would be done is we would apply for grants. And, and through the same partner, which would be the Hudson River Estuary Program, they provide grants and fundings to prepare N R I. The town would, would match that grant, and then we would have more latitude to do what we want, but we pay for it. So we could certainly, you know, through that process, we could pay, we could have done it that way. And, and included that in the scope to have it go online. And some, a lot of other towns have it online. Pecosia has it online.
Okay, so we'll have PDFs or something like that, Mark?
Well, what we'll get is, is we're going to, through this partnership, we're going to get a hard copy version. But we'll still get all those G I S, all those G I S files are going to, we're going to get them all. And I'm hoping that we will.
I just, do we get a PDF version also or no?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure we'll get PDF.
Okay.
Yeah. A scan version. But generally, I think this is going to be like an eight map by 11 document. And the maps don't really come out that well on a printed document. They really come out when you have access and you can, you know, print specific things for yourself. So I would hope that we would be able to take the next step after we finish this project. And we get the natural resource done to encourage the town board to say, you know, can we put this online? Can we make, can we create a mapper for ourselves? But otherwise, it'll be up to us individually to, to manage the G I S files. And I'm sure Jim Levy probably won't have any problem, you know, managing all the G I S files. Anybody, you know, that has, and it all familiar with G I S would be able to utilize this data.
Great. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. I thought it was a very good presentation. I have, I have a couple of questions. Sure. You've integrated a cultural resources inventory into the N R I, which I think is sometimes a little unusual because cultural resources are not necessarily natural resources. And I'm wondering where the expertise is coming from to actually map those cultural resources.
Well, again, we're not doing any additional mapping for this project. And if we.
So where, where's the baseline that they're using that establishes cultural resources?
Right now would be whatever existing data we have. So we have mixed scenic roads, whatever we have. I know that Rhine Cliff, it shows historic resources in Rhine Cliff, wherever.
So it would be the existing landmarks district and things like that.
Yeah. If we have any additional information that we could provide, we can add that. So, yeah, it is, other towns have included cultural resources into their natural resource inventory. And when they put it online, it becomes even more valuable. They can even, you could even have, you know, restaurants, you could, to where you go. It could, it could expand as far as you really want it to be. That's, that's kind of what they give you the latitude to do.
Okay.
How far you want to go.
All right. Well, I think tonight, I'm going to thank you.
Sure. Thank you. I know you got a lot to do. Meeting.
I know at the, the very end of your presentation, you gave your contact information. And I would encourage anybody who has any comments. I certainly think anything we come up with is always important as data for making decisions. So thanks for participating for the presentation.
Thank you for letting me speak.
You're welcome. Okay, did anybody else have any last minute quick questions, or are we ready to move on? Okay, I'm going to take that absence of conversation to mean we're ready to move on to new applications. The first up is Nick and Irene Buzzel, 54 Pilgrims Progress Road for site plan, special use permit and minor subdivision. And I'm not sure who's here representing the Buzzles.
Dawn Santiago, I'm here representing the Buzzles.
Okay.
With Christina Ducharme Architecture. And so just a brief overview of the project. We are taking an existing lot on 54 Pilgrims Progress Road and proposing to subdivide into three individual lots. The existing house would remain on lot one and keep its original driveway. Lot two, at the top of it, will have a proposed home with pool guesthouse, separate pool, sorry, separate guesthouse and a barn. And below would be future lot three, which has its own single family residence and pool guesthouse. And both new lots, lot two and lot three, would have their own individual curb cuts, which have been approved by the highway department and driveways and septic systems, which are now under review by the Department of Health.
Were there any changes made to this after the pre-conference meeting?
Yes, the pre-conference meeting, we were originally connecting lot one and lot two off of the existing lot one driveway. And we've now made things a little bit easier by having separate entrances to each lot.
Okay.
And those are really the only changes that have occurred. Anything to go again?
Jim, do you have comments you'd like to make?
I have a couple of comments, and Dawn, you'll get a copy of all these after the meeting. We'll make sure to get them to you, so you don't have to write them down. So the, the guesthouse and barn located on lot two are going to require variances because of their location closer to the streets than the principal house. And I think we discussed that in the pre-conference meeting. I also believe you're going to need a variance for the total square footage of the accessory structures on that lot because it's over, was permitted by code. Just a minor clarification thing, the, the acreage totals for the three lots don't seem to equal that of what you showed for the entire site. So just a clarification, just, you know, in terms of the numbers, it's just off by a little bit. Like you said, this has gone off to the, to county health, which is good. But I did notice, and Dave Paulson will be the one to, to really get into this. I didn't see a well for the barn or the guesthouse on lot two. I was wondering if the plan was to tie those into the existing house or what, what thinking was for that?
I, the, I reviewed the new drawings that were submitted to the town earlier this, or today, earlier this week. And they did add an extra well in between the guesthouse and the barn. So I'll make sure to include that on our next meeting document.
Okay. And then I did notice the proposed reserve location for lot one is within 100 feet of an existing well. And maybe just about 100 feet from another existing well. But again, that's something Dave Paulson will look into specifically and talk to you about if he has any concerns. Also, it's a labeling thing, so we can get to that, but the existing tank in front of lot, lot one house, is that an existing septic tank?
Yes.
Okay. He'll probably, again, talk about just labeling that as a septic tank. Again, related to day, but I think the planning board would also be interested in knowing that the kind of the number of bedrooms and bathrooms that are kind of proposed in each of the structures. I don't know if you have that right now, and you can kind of run through that quickly for us in terms of what's proposed on each lot.
None of them have been completely designed at this point. They're all. But I believe they are four to five bedrooms.
Okay, and then the use of the barn.
Information.
I can submit the, the, sorry, I can submit the Department of Health drawing along with what we had next time, and then it'll have all the pertinent information. So I believe the septic for lot three is for seven bedrooms. So five for the house and two for the guesthouse. The same with lot number two. And then the guesthouse on lot two would have a two bedroom for the reserved septic. So you've got a seven, seven and two for the systems. But I'll submit all that in the next meeting.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think that'd be good information. And then what, what is the, the proposal for the barn? Do you know what type of activities are proposed to take place? Do they know? The owners know what they?
As far as I know.
I'm sorry, was that?
Agricultural.
Oh, it's going to be agricultural barn? Okay, if, if that is an agricultural use, then that may, I think that may take away the need for the variance. I have to double check, maybe confusing things. But we can look into that and let you know.
I think you'd have to be more specific about the type of agricultural use.
Right. And then just another real quick one, you're proposing pools on the two properties. We like on the sketch, on the site plans to have a note that say that the pools will be enclosed by a New York State Code compliant, you know, safety barrier or whatever it is. So, you know, however you want to word that, something to that effect on the plans, just noting that those will be, that will be done, whether it's a fence and or a cover. And then I think, I don't know, the planning board can, can let you know what they think. But I thought that some details of what the pools might look like would probably be in order just in terms of size and any, you know, or at least labeling if there's, you know, stone or concrete proposed around the pools or things like that. Just so we know what's going in and what exactly.
Or, or any associated landscaping.
Right.
Lighting, landscaping, anything surrounding the pools like that should be part of the site plan.
Just a question, lighting and landscaping for that, would that be more on the site plan review for each individual lot when we move towards at the, at the actual building permit? Or is that included in the subdivision review?
Well, this one is subdivision and site plan. So we would typically review it as part of the site plan. If, if you know what you want to do, it should be on the plans.
Yeah, I just wanted to double check.
So, so, so a cut of what you think the proposed lighting would be to show that it's consistent with the code. It's down lighting, cut off lighting, dark stack, custack compliant. Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think it's just a little bit more information, I think, to show some of the details we can have in the file.
Proposed hardscaping, lighting, and general pool size and appearance.
And then the note about fencing or whatever, the code compliant safety element will be. And again, you can, whatever wording works for you, just something to that effect on there. All right, Mel, that's what I have.
Head open up to questions from the.
I have a question.
Okay, Michael.
And I don't recall if we have this or not. Do we have the special use permit applications for the guesthouses, which will be considered accessory dwelling units?
Pre-conference meeting that we did. Pre conference meeting that we didn't need any variance applications at this time.
No, that's not a variance. It's a special use permit to allow for an accessory dwelling unit. That requires special use permit in site plan.
Okay. I believe we did submit a special use permit.
We do have a permit, Michael, that's what's up on the screen here, and it does reference what is proposed for each lot.
Okay.
Michael, is that all the information you're looking for?
Well, we're gonna need, obviously. That I mean, that may be sufficient if once we get what Jim was referring to, a little more detailed information on these things. If we're actually approving these structures, uh, we need, you know, as you were saying, more impression lighting, different factors. Are you getting to them? Are there walkways, different landscaping things, things of that sort? As if there's, let's say, was on lot one, they want to put in a guest house and a pool. It would be a special use permit, site plan, application for that. And the detailed information we then require for that. We require for each of these other guest houses and guest house and pool house.
Okay.
Do you saying, just to confirm, you're saying you want individual special use permits for each guest house and pool house?
Generally, that each one is a separate structure, yes.
Jim, how much of this sort of filling out so that the application is complete and full has been shared with the applicant? Because it looks then to me, to be fair, it looks like it needs a lot more information, drawings, et cetera. Is that fair or am I wrong?
Well, I think when you get to a special use permit for accessory dwelling unit, you'd be looking at elevations and others relative to the.
Right, yeah.
We're not at that at that stage yet. And based on our pre conference meeting, I was under the impression that we were just approving the subdivision of the of into three different lots at this time. And that all of the other items would be happening as we move forward with the design.
But if that is indeed the case, then we then the special use permits that Jim just showed up online a part of this application. Subdivision is one process, but special use permits for accessory dwellings, accessory structures, things of that sort is a different process, actually, under a different part of the town code.
Right.
You basically, I think you're mixing and matching two different processes here. If you want to just do the subject, which I understand, and you have shown here the proposed buildings and septic and all, particularly for the health department to determine whether or not that's adequate for what you want to do. That's fine. And then come in later for the special experience and site plans you need for each individual project. Which I think is more or less what you're suggesting you wanted to do.
Yeah, I mean, that's that was our original understanding. I believe we submitted them at the request of the town.
I, as I recall, it was for subdivision as opposed to any site specific work, site specific structures. I mean, I understand why you want to say seven bedrooms, so that whatever your septic systems are being proposed, the health department knows what they're reviewing, what they're reviewing it for. But if we're actually talking about specific structures and you're looking for approval for specific structures along with the subdivision, then we do need a good deal more information, as Melody said, elevation. It's a good deal more complex than I think what we have here.
Then at this point, I would, um, is it possible to just do the subdivision and not the the guest house permits?
Absolutely.
Okay, so if we could withdraw that application and move forward just with the site plan information?
Okay, the one thing I will mention to you is that when we do do subdivisions, we look to develop areas of disturbance, building envelopes. So it's very helpful to have what you're proposing to build on the thing to show where it can go, where those areas will be rather than, but you don't, as part of the subdivision, without getting into the specifics of each specific structure, which might require a special use permit in site plan.
Gotcha. So we are showing the area of disturbance on each lot.
Correct.
Just the general idea of what kind of buildings we wanted to put on.
Okay, that's good. And that would be part of the subdivision process. Then when you actually go to, you know, what's subdivided, the subdivisions approved. At that time, whoever is, you know, owners of the different properties, that would be the ones that would then come forward to get building permits for these things. And some of those building permits will require special use permits and site plan approvals before they can get the building permits.
Exactly, and variances and whatnot, whatever is required.
If necessary, if necessary.
Okay.
Right, so this application will just be for the minor subdivision. It will remove the site plan and special use permit. And that that's how I had reviewed it as all three. So that was why I was asking the questions I was asking.
Well, that's what it was submitted as.
Right, well, right, right.
All right, so this is changing to simply an application for minor subdivision.
Right, now I went back and looked at the pre app, and it was what we had discussed was was minor subdivision. So somewhere between there and here, we we got the extra applications. But anyway, it doesn't matter.
There's a letter from the town that was requesting the additional documents. That's why.
Yeah, certainly, I know we discussed the additional information so we can see what would be proposed. But but regardless, um, yeah, we'll we'll pull the other two and make it a minor subdivision.
And so any that were sent to the town for that, would they just be on hold until we move forward with that project? Or would they be returned?
I would.
These, you can catch up with Gretchen.
Okay, we'll do.
Uh, questions from other members of the planning board, comments? Okay, Jim, I don't have your notes in front of me, so I don't know what we've got coming up in the form of a resolution.
Yep, I will pull it up right now. And we're gonna make a quick edit to it. We'll just do it here so everyone can see it. So the application now will will change to just a minor subdivision. And this is gonna be a little sloppy, but I'll just do this here. And this will change to minor subdivision, and then it will just simply be referencing section one oh one four dash four. And then I'll take care of the other edits down below. But that paragraph now effectively, I think, represents what we're going to do in the three lots.
Okay, so we're going to, aside from what you're changing, we're gonna we're going to schedule a public hearing location on October eighteenth at six forty five. We're going to delegate planning board members who's interested in going.
I can go, Joe.
Joe, and who will accompany Joe?
I can go. Uh, Michael can.
All right, so Joe and Michael will go. I'm having trouble reading all this small print. That's okay, I'm just gonna move to accept the accept the resolution as with the additional information changed and added. So Joe and Michael, October eighteenth, then we've deleted the site plan and special use permit. Could I have a motion to accept the resolution as corrected?
Second.
Second, Michael, all those in favor? Any opposed?
I'm gonna abstain because this seems to me.
Seems what?
It seems not properly organized, forgive me, Jim, but it doesn't seem right to cut and paste and whatever at this point. So I'll just abstain.
Okay, so the motion carries with one abstention. Much. Moving on to our second new application, Christopher and Vicky Stephanopoulos. One nine way road, site plan, special use permit and minor subdivision.
Uh, good evening, and everyone here.
Yep.
Uh, it's Mark Kraminsky. I'm here representing Chris and Stephanopoulos for creation of a three lot subdivision located on the north side of Way Road. And the total parcel area is thirty four point seventy two acres of land. And the purpose of the subdivision is twofold. Uh, primarily, Chris and Vicki would like to create a parcel. There's an existing residence located on this parcel on that. The Stephanopoulos residence is, when you're looking at the map, is located on lot number one. And so Vicki and Chris are, you know, have their house on the market looking to sell. So one of the reasons for creation of this this subdivision is to have a separate lot to so that they can sell that parcel. That's lot number one, and that lot number one size is fifteen point five three acres in size. There is an existing driveway. If you look to the lower right hand corner of the map, there's an existing loop driveway that provides access to the house. House is currently served by an existing water supply and has its own septic system located on that property. And then the also part of the goal of this subdivision is to create two new lots that are that make up the balance of the thirty four acres. And so now, as you look to the Westerly portion of the of this property, that's lots number two and three. Uh, there's a a solid dashed line that occupies portions of lots number two and three. And that's a New York State D E C designated wetland. And that has been field flagged and verified by the New York State D E C. I'll provide that verification information from the D E Cs. And then what's also associated with that is, you can see I have the hundred foot adjacent area. Uh, that's also outlined on that on this on this plan. That shows the, you know, restrictive area, although permitted, you know, if you if so desirous, but it's restrictive area from the state wetland. And so with that in mind, because the that's the state wetland occupies the balance of the frontage along Way Road, there's a significant amount of frontage along Way Road, which is um, primarily, but it's actually exclusively on on lot number three. Uh, access to these to lot number two and lot number three is is being proposed by a common driveway. And so you can see at the southwest corner of lot number one. Um, there's there's a strip of land that provides frontage for lot number two. And at the same time, it allows for access to lot number two and lot number three. And this is, you know, sheet one, this is the overall minor subdivision plan that's being presented. There's an accompanying sheet, which we don't have to get into now, Jim, but we can go there later. Shows I I provided details for the construction aspect of it. It's just a small portion of a common driveway. Obviously, you know, access from Way Road. And then it splits off very quickly into individual access for lot number three. And then there's a longer individual driveway that goes for lot number two. In addition, once you, once you you know, look at lot two and three. More specifically, I showed the building envelope area, which is reflective of the, you know, requires bulk regulations and setbacks um, in this particular zone, which I guess I should have started out with. It's, uh, this is R C five zoning district. So the building envelopes represent setbacks for R C five. And then obviously, when you look at lot number two and three, there's the hundred foot restrictive area from the state wetland. Uh, that's that's also shown. Regarding lot number one, I didn't show, you know, specific building envelopes. I I provided the actual setbacks from the existing residents to the to the sidelines, you know, front and side yard setbacks. Obviously, the current resident meets all current residents meets all the existing setbacks. And then in addition uh, to the, uh, you know, uh, this this specific plan, I didn't, I I mentioned earlier that, um, there's a, if you could go to sheet two, Jim, it's just some specific detail with regard to the common, there it is. So I just show some grading and drainage improvements associated with the common driveway, just to make sure that uh, two things that I consider when developing this common driveway access. Oh, first number one is that it's an approvable access to Way Road. So there's been a preliminary conversation with the highway superintendent about that. An accompanying approval letter will be forwarded to the planning board. Now, that's number one. And number two is I took great care in designing this driveway in such a way that it does not impact any drainage patterns stick to that neighbor to the that would be to the south and to the west. And also, obviously, to Way Road. So there's no impact on the on the town highway. And then associated with it, I've just shown some you know, profiles of the driveways meeting current standards for driveway considerations in in the town of Rhinebeck. A document submitted were as requested by the you know, you know, standard subdivision documents. Uh, this is being, you know, subdivision documents and a short form E A F. I just note that, you know, based on the board's early, the initial presentation uh, this evening from Mark Dixon. I utilized that, if, you know, some of the, most of the information that he referred to in all my applications that are bearing prepared. So for example, this E A F, uh, D E C has an E A F environmental resource mapper, uh, which is, which I utilize in all my applications. So that, you know, notes some of the, you know, obvious resources on the property. It's noted in this application, you know, obviously, one of them being the New York State D E C wetland, which it's it's obviously the intention of this application to respect the wetland and adjacent area. And that's certainly drove the configuration. And and obviously, the requirement for a common driveway, trying to access lot number three on any of that other frontage from Way Road is not permissible by D E C. Nor did it make any sense to do that. It was, uh, that's that's, you know, open agricultural land and it's intention to stay like that. So it's just, um, you know, small development footprints for the residences, which I just, you know, graphically showed here. Once again, this application is similar to the one you just heard. It's just, uh, the main purpose is just to create a lot number one for sale of that parcel. And then there's the two additional parcels being created with, you know, basic information, just house location, driveway. And and then it's, uh, if if need be, I can outline specific disturbance areas. But once again, minor disturbances just considered for both of these lots. I think that concludes everything I have to say.
Thank you, Mark. Jim, any comments you'd like to make?
So I took a look at it and I don't have a whole lot on it. I think it all seems to meet the the requirements. Um, originally, it was a four lot subdivision, and this has gone down to to three now with the flag lot so that we don't impact the wetlands. So that was certainly a positive, positive step and change. The only comment and question I had, Mark, is regarding the the common drive. And it just kind of, you kind of cut it off with a straight line. I was just wondering if it would make sense to extend that up to the kind of inside of the the view of the two driveways there, just for the purposes of ownership and maintenance that, you know, that would be common up until it's clear where it splits off to to each individual home. Um, and along, obviously, that property line to just extend up to the, I don't know if that's the north, but up to the top of.
It is to the north. And you know, Jim, that makes perfect sense.
And it's there.
Yeah, it does. That makes perfect sense. Happy to do that. And obviously, I I forgot to include that would prepare a common drive easement and maintenance agreement to the town. I I I omitted that. I apologize. Yes.
No, no problem. That was that was my next comment was just that that document should be provided. But yeah, I just think it makes it easier. It's a little less, it's just easier to define. And if there's ever a a question, that's all.
Okay, that's fine.
I really, no, that that's about it for me. I really, no, that, that's about it for me.
Any other questions or comments from the planning board? Okay, Jim, do you have a resolution for us to look at? So nothing changes here. I think you see it in front of you. We will be, uh, so this is the draft procedural resolution, uh, schedules a public hearing again on October eighteenth at six forty-five, October eighteen, six forty-five PM. Uh, planning board members, who is interested in making a site visit?
I'll go.
Joe, or is that Joe or Sean?
Sign up Joe, but it was missed.
Sign, okay, that's Sean. Who else would like to go with Sean? I'll go with Sean. Okay, and I think that pretty much covers it. So could I have a motion to accept the draft pres- uh, procedural resolution?
So moved, Edna.
And a second, second Joe, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Are you up again? Lower effort partners?
Yes.
Special use permit and minor subdivision seems to be the theme of the evening.
It does, and I just changed the road name and I could save us some time.
No, 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 we want to hear everything you have to say.
Okay, um, good evening, Mark Remenski again. Thank you for your time. I am, uh, here, uh, representing, uh, Accra, uh, Lower Accra Hook Road Partners LLC, um, for an application for, uh, minor subdivision. And, um, this parcel is, uh, located, uh, on the westerly side of Accra Hook Road. And it is, and the southerly boundary of this property is actually the town of Rhinebeck and town of Hyde Park boundary. Um, the, uh, total parcel size is twenty-nine point six eight one acres. And, um, just one second, um, and so, uh, application is for, in this case, is for a two lot minor subdivision. Um, starting from, uh, Accra Hook Road, um, both, uh, uh, access points. And so individual driveway, in this case, individual driveway for, uh, each of, each of the proposed lot. Lot number one being, uh, the parcel to the north, which is thirteen point nine one one acres. Um, it ha- it will have its own individual driveway access. That has been approved. Um, I have an approval letter from, uh, the town of Rhinebeck Highway Superintendent. Um, uh, uh, you know, access, you can see just from the, uh, topography. Um, you know, there's some steeper terrain, um, located, uh, on, on this entire parcel. Um, but it, the driveway location that's shown, uh, will meet all town of Rhinebeck, um, or requirements for individual driveway. Uh, you know, a, a house location is shown, um, just as before, uh, you know, a general house location along with, in this case, also, um, this is also RC five, um, zoning district. Uh, setbacks associated with the RC five zoning district. Same thing moving to lot number, uh, two, parcel size is fifteen point seven seven zero acres. Uh, individual access, I, I should note on the, on the, on the, uh, lot number one, they're, uh, not specifically shown on my plan, just due to detail. There's, there's some old farm roads, um, there are portions thereof that are located throughout this property. And so they're, um, and the, you know, in the interest of, you know, uh, for, you know, minimizing disturbance and preserving, um, you know, assets that are on the, on the properties in some locations that those, you know, these, uh, existing farm or logging roads are going to be utilized. Um, and it's more, uh, importantly, on, on lot number two, that first section, uh, where it's, um, where it's running parallel to the setback line. Um, that is along an existing roadway. So utilizing that and gaining access to a, uh, you know, to a theoretical home site located in that general area on the property. Uh, once again, uh, being respectful of the existing physical features, um, you know, topography. Um, um, you know, vegetation trees on the property, trying to, you know, maintain adequate screen, screening, et cetera. That's, that's all, uh, um, being considered in the development of this project. Um, I'd note also that there is, in this case, there's a New York State DEC wetland located pretty, uh, quite a bit to the west, but I did show it just for reference, um, to this, um, for this particular application, just because it was noted, it, it was noted in the EAF. And I just wanted to give the board, um, information with regard to that. Um, it's, uh, also I note that, you know, it's within, uh, uh, five hundred feet of agricultural district parcels. So that is, that is also part of this application too. Um, I think that concludes my initial presentation.
Jim, comments?
Um, just a couple, um, and one I should have mentioned to the previous application, but I didn't. Um, we had talked before about the fact that lots this large typically can just get county, we think can get county department of health, just a sign off letter saying that uh, waste spools and all that can be put on the site. Is that something you're looking into, Mark? Remember we discussed it in, in the pre-con?
Well, in this, and I was, oh, I, I guess I forgot to mention that on Stephanopoulos, but we'll handle, well, let's handle this one. And, um, so for the, for these particular lots, we've already advanced, well, several test holes on both lots witnessed by the health department. And so, um, what I, what I've done in other municipalities is I've, and health department won't sign off on this, but I will. I will provide the town of Rhinebeck a letter that, um, I, that, you know, in my opinion, you know, my professional opinion that, um, that individual water supply and wastewater disposal is achievable. Uh, or, or you can gain approval from Duchess County Department of Health. If there's some specific language the town would prefer, I'll provide that. But I've done this in other towns, rather than go through the process of, uh, you know, because house sites are, are not, you know, have not been detailed or specifically chosen, but I can provide a letter saying that you can, that I believe that this lot, uh, you, you can achieve, uh, approval from Duchess County Department of Health for individual water supply and sewage disposal. And I will also do the same for Stephanopoulos.
Okay. Thank you. Forgot to note that previously. Um, two other just, um, quick items. Uh, Mark, you talked about getting signed off from the town, um, for the two entrances. And I did see that note, but I was a little confused. The note had talked about something about the approving the main entrance on the north end of the property. Um, and also referred to a south side entrance as being gated.
I, that, that was it, um, so that was an error on my part, Jim. That was, that was actually for Rockledge.
Okay, okay, so we'll have, we'll have the, we'll get the appropriate letter for the file.
I apologize for that and, and I, I, I got in touch with, with Bob Wyatt. And so I have, I have a letter for, um, for Accra, or hack, lower Accra Road Partners, which I will, uh, to the town and to you, Jim.
Perfect. Oh, um, um, there was discussion of a potential accessory structure being placed on the lot. You're not showing that. Is that just not in the cards for the applicants right now?
Yeah, it is not. So it's, so just the choice of the applicant, the applicant. So it's lower Accra part, you know, it's two partners. Once it's settled, they'll go, they'll split individually and then any required applications to the board will occur after that by the, by the individuals.
Okay. All right. And then the last one, um, just wanted to note that this property is on the town of Hyde Park boundary. Um, so Melody, when we read the procedural resolution, there is a, one unique item in there, um, that we are going to give the clerk of the town of Hyde Park notice of the public hearing, as is required by, uh, general municipal law two thirty-nine and N. That's it for me.
Questions, comments from other members of the planning board? All right, uh, we must have a draft procedural resolution. Uh, again, we're accepting the application, classifying it. Public hearing will take place once again on October eighteenth at six forty-five. Um, and number four, as Jim pointed out, in accordance with general municipal law, we're directing the clerk to give notice to the town of Hyde Park. Uh, delegate planning board members.
I will go, Melody.
Edna, and who will go with Edna?
I'll go. This is Joe.
Okay, Joe, thank you very much. Uh, the rest, I think, uh, is pretty standard language. So with not any further ado, I would ask for a motion to accept the procedural resolution.
So moved.
So moved, is that Michael?
Yep.
Second.
Second, Edna, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, everybody, for the new applications. We'll move now to public hearings. And I would welcome in now the gentleman from the Memorial Lutheran Church. I'm sorry, it took so long to get to you. So the first public hearing this evening is for the Memorial Lutheran Church, one, two, three, two, route three O eight. Site plan and special use permit for a nursery school. So sir, are you still with us?
I, I'm Sean McLaughlin. I'm from Aster Services. We're hopefully going to be the tenants there. And I think Karen Becker is on the call from Memorial Church as well.
Okay, so who's?
Yes, I am.
Great, so, uh,
Also here. Tandy Walker, I had it muted. I didn't pull myself off mute.
Okay, all right, so you're all here. Do you want to quickly review for us the application before us, subject to public hearing?
Yes.
Well, see, there you go, Tandy.
Go ahead, Sean.
Sure. So I, I believe what's before you is, uh, if the proposal is for Aster Services to operate a head start early childhood center there that would house eighteen children. And the proposal in particular for this, uh, for this hearing would be, uh, the installation of a fenced in air play area, um, that will represent sixty by sixty.
Okay. Anyone else from your team want to make any comments at this time?
Well, we're looking forward to this opportunity with Aster, uh, uh, child and, and family program. Uh, I feel that the community is really going to be rewarded with the fact that we're able to do for disadvantaged children that are, uh, at their, their best at the age that they're coming in. And, uh, we're looking really godly forward to what we're going to receive from these folks. Um, and this, this fencing, it's a thirty-six hundred square foot area that's, uh, it's grass, it's, uh, grass that children can run around on and play and have fun. And the where, where it's located, it's very, uh, uh, isolated to where there's nothing going to interfere with their play or there's nothing going to distract them from what they're doing. And, uh, I just wanted to get that out there, that it's, it, it's really welcomed by us. And, uh, moving forward, we're really looking forward to it.
Okay. Have we had a site visit report previously?
Uh, yeah. Oh, go ahead, Michael.
Uh, well, Joe and I went out to take a look at this. And quite frankly, uh, the facility, what they're proposing is excellent. Uh, the parish house has, you know, perfect room for kids to play in. The playground they're proposing is basically in almost a little area surrounded by trees and things of that sort of beautiful green area. It's almost a perfect playground. And in this instance, uh, there's no problems with traffic, parking, anything like that, that might endanger anybody, given where it is. Um, I, uh, I think that this, uh, is a perfect use for this structure and for this area. And I think it's, uh, going to be a very good facility for the public and for the kids.
Joe?
Yeah, I was just gonna, uh, add on that the building isn't used during the week by the church. Uh, it's a great space for children. And then behind, uh, the building where the playground will be, like borders, the, the woods in the back. It's, uh, isolated and a great lawn space that they'll be able to play in.
Okay. Any, uh, any other comments or questions from other planning board members?
So you mentioned playground. Are they proposing to do actual like equipment there?
So at this, at this time, no, it really is, um, we, we wouldn't know, we're not quite sure what we would put in there. First, we needed to know what the space would be and obviously play areas have safety areas around them. So we, we would figure that as we go for, as we went forward. But at this time, no, just that, we just wanted to make sure that, um, from a supervision perspective, that kids that were out at play in that area wouldn't be able to venture towards the highway, um, and be in danger. So that's why we, we really wanted to make sure the fencing was in, was in place.
And then I, I might have missed this and apologies if I did, um, the ages?
Uh, three to, three to five.
Okay, thank you.
And the fencing will have two gates. Uh, one will be in the rear, which is near a handicap ramp, which is accessible for children to enter the building or exit the building. And the other fence, uh, gateway will be facing the street of three O nine, uh, three O eight. And, uh, so it's, uh, it's an area where it's easily gotten into and out of by children and, and, uh, parents and teachers.
I'll, I'll, I'll add one caveat to that, uh, not as easy for the kids. We, we put safety latches on them that are similar to what would be used in a pool enclosure, um, just so that the kids don't wander off on their, on their own. So it's really the same sort of idea that a fence around a pool would keep children out. This is to help keep the kids in. But the second gate is really to establish, the second means an egress from that area, you need, there should there be a need.
Exactly.
Just a general question. I don't have the answer to it. If, if they decide in the future to add playground equipment, do they need to come back? Or is that just governed through the county?
Well, this is Jim. I'd, I'd say potentially. It depends on what the proposal is and, yeah. If, if, if there's a proposal to put something in the fenced area, you're going to have to take a look at the code and, and possibly talk to the zoning administrator about whether or not it would need a, a permit or another review.
All right, just wanted, just wanted that to be clear to the applicant.
Yeah, and our, our, our take on it would be is that at this point, we, given the age of the kids, that some of the play equipment is probably, probably would be more lay on top of the surface type play, uh, equipment seasonal, moving it sort of in and out based on what was, what was going on versus fixed, fixed equipment at this point.
Okay.
I would just add that it's possible for, if fixed equipment did become, you know, desirable things like that, a building permit might be necessary. Uh, just safety standpoint, then to inspect and make sure it's properly installed and, you know, safe and all of that. But I believe, I believe that's all that would be required since it's already going to be approved as a playground.
Okay.
Melody, uh, can we hear more about what will go on within the building?
Sure. So Head, Head Start is a federally fed, uh, federally funded program um, that provides educational services to economically disadvantaged children and families uh, for a three to five year, uh, three to five year olds. Um, it, it, it has shown that it gives those kids that jump start that they need, that when they go to elementary school, they're not behind most kids that go into, to the education system. Um, Aster has been the sole, uh, grantee of the, of this program since nineteen, I want to say it's seventy-eight. I, I could be wrong on that. Uh, and we operate, uh, six centers throughout Duchess County. Uh, this one was actually located previously in the, um, uh, Red Hook School District at the Mill Road Elementary School, but they've expanded their population and they could no longer, uh, lease us, uh, a, a classroom. So, uh, these will come in here. So it's educational programs. Um, you know, there'll be crafts, there'll be reading, there'll be numbers, there'll be lots of things.
Okay, thank you. Edna, so your question?
I, I note that Jim has listed some specific requests for information. Uh, number, hours of operation, numbers of children.
Well, I believe we received the, uh, number of children. I think that cannot exceed eighteen. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. Our, our licensing would not allow us to go above eighteen for the, for the center. And it's, it's probably unlikely we would be at eighteen. It just doesn't. It just doesn't seem to work that way number wise. That would be 18 children. There would be three to four staff located at the, at the location. We basically follow the school calendar, with the exception, there is a seven week program in the summer. And the hour, so it would be Monday through Friday, and the hours are typically, say, eight o'clock in the morning until 2:30 in the afternoon.
Anything else? Having no more questions from the planning board, is there anyone here on the Zoom call from the public who would like to comment on this application?
Jim? Nobody's turned on the screen, Melody, so I think we can move ahead.
And I think next we would close the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Michael, second by Edna, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so the motion to close the public hearing passes. Jim, we have a resolution and help me out here to find the most important things to point out.
Yep. So it was, it was posted online last week. We reaffirming it as a type two secret action. We've reviewed reports from the planning board members and others on their site visit. And again, we just kind of go through with respect to the application for special use permit, find it to be consistent with the general standards for special use permits set forth in section 12567. With respect to the application for site plan approval, find it to be consistent with town code 125, section 12575, referencing the engineer plan that we got submitted to us.
Right. I would entertain a motion to accept the resolution.
I would move that we accept it. Edna.
Moved by Edna, second by Michael. I'll poll the board. Let's see if I can remember. I've got so many things up here. Edna?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Delise?
Hi, sorry, my mute was on. Hi.
It's okay. Sean?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Am I the only one left, or did I skip somebody?
Me. Aye.
Kathy, aye, and I vote aye. The motion carries, and we wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night now.
Good night, good night. Moving on to the next public hearing this evening, Michael Chambers, 59 Valley Way Road. Site plan, special use permit, home renovations and additions. I think I see Kyle here.
Yes, I'm here. I think I need Jim to allow me to, just turn my video on. So Kyle Diamond, New Dimension Construction, representing the chambers, along with me, the architect, Michelle, as well as Tina, as well as Anna, and then the engineer, Ernie, is also, they're on this call. So if we have any specific questions for them, we can certainly have them chime in. I think what we send back to you folks was the updated rendering. I know, Melody, you were concerned about, yeah, so you can see on there. We did add, and there's another review on the updated ones that kind of adds that detailing on to the gate, the gables that are on the backside of the house. Yeah, that, that's an older version. The newer version has the detailing on the gable that we're looking at on the left of the screen. And then we've also submitted in an erosion plan for the, for the board to look at, showing the sill fencing and the detailing of that. So I think we have addressed, and we also submitted a lighting plan. So we have all of those things that were requested at our last meeting.
Okay. I think, Joe, we reported on the site visit before. Did we not?
Yes, we did.
Is there anything, anything else you'd like to comment on at this time?
I'm good with what they've changed.
Okay. Jim, have you had a chance to look at everything? Hello, Jim?
Oh, sorry. Yes, I did take a look at it, and I think we've been provided with everything we needed. I was actually looking to pull the file. I didn't get it uploaded into file for tonight, apparently, so.
I think we were mostly waiting on the engineering stuff. Is that right?
Yeah, we, we needed to see the sort of zoom in on the site plan, which Ernie did, and then he laid, you know, showed where the sill fencing would go. And then he also designated an area for like a, you know, a rain garden or water quality area. Should that, you know, should we deem that necessary through, through the course of construction? We wanted to have that available to us as well.
Okay, planning board members. Comments, questions? All right, hearing none. I would open it up now to public. Is there anyone on the call wishing to comment on this application? I'm assuming silence means, Jim, there's nobody waiting to make a comment?
Nope, doesn't see, I don't see anyone there, Melody.
All right. If I'm not hearing anything, I think we're at the point where we could make a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Joe.
I'll take Michael and Joe as, as motion and secondar. All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Public hearing is closed, so now we can move to an approval resolution, Jim. Okay. This too was posted. I hope you've had a chance to all look at it. I don't think there's anything unusual in here, nor do we need to go through and read it, unless anyone has any questions.
Standard resolution, pretty much the same as the last one regarding the type of action and the special use and site plan approval references.
Okay, could I have a motion to accept the approval resolution, the draft?
So moved, Edna.
Moved by Edna, seconded by Delise. Again, I will poll the board. Delise?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And other than myself, is there anybody else? Then I vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. All the best to you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Next on the agenda, as submitted by Jim, is Karen Whitman, 16 Old Post Road. It's my understanding we have a request to continue the public hearing until October 18th at 6:45. Is that correct, Gretchen?
Yes.
And I assume Catherine is not here to make that request herself?
No, she asked me to put that in for her.
And this is, I guess, pending on health department information?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to continue the public hearing to October 18th at 6:45?
I move that we do that, Edna.
Edna motions. Second, Sean, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Last up, James Steinberg, 214 Rip Road, site plan review for a pool installation. You may recall that this has been on our agenda for some months now, and Mr. Steinberg's representative, Nijane Poole, was scheduled to present to us a couple of months ago and didn't, didn't come to the meeting. I don't believe we've had, do we have an update, Gretchen?
I believe he said he, they're still waiting for the engineer and some things for that, and they also needed the variance. But I did let him know we will be continuing it to an undetermined date and time, since they aren't sure when they will be ready.
Okay. Thank you. So the motion, I'd like a motion to continue to an undetermined date and time as opposed to a specific date.
I move that we continue to an undetermined date and time.
Thank you, Edna. Kathy, all right, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions, the motion carries. I believe that brings us to the end of the agenda, unless I'm missing something. Jim, am I missing anything?
Oh, I believe we're at the end, so just close the meeting.
All right, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, Edna.
Okay, thank you, everybody. The motion carries. Thanks for a meeting.